Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting of the Kansas City, Kansas Community College Board of Trustees to order this Tuesday, October 28th, 2025. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by trustee Scruggs Andreyu.
Chair Isnard. Randy, are we live? I didn't see live.
We've got the thumbs up, yes.
Okay, thank you.
allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
All right, thank you. I'll now read our mission statement, which is to inspire individuals and enrich our community, one student at a time. Cheryl, could we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Ash.
Here.
Trustee Chriswell. Trustee Gilstrap.
Here.
Trustee Hoskins Sutton. Chair Isnard.
Here.
Vice Chair Ricketts.
Here.
Trustee Scruggs Andreyu.
Here.
Thank you. Next, for the approval of the agenda, board, there is one item that we need to add to the agenda, so I'll be asking that we approve an amendment to the agenda to add an executive session right at the start of the meeting, please. This will be for consultation with an attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. It will be held in room 121 of the Pioneer Technical Career Center.
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, then, at this time, I would ask for a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with attorney under attorney-client privilege for 10 minutes. Board will be allowed time to transition to the virtual and in-person meeting room. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Recording in progress.
All right, thank you for bearing with us through that. Next on our agenda, I'd invite Mr. Austin Howell, University of St. Mary and KCKCC student, and Dr. Michelle Metzinger, University of St. Mary Provost and Vice President for Academic Affairs.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. So about a year ago, KCKCC and the University of St. Mary entered into a memorandum of understanding for a trade program that shares a trade specialty and a bachelor's degree. And the reason why the University of St. Mary felt so passionate about this is because the trades offer an opportunity for a skill set, but the bachelor's degree offered future employers, the ability to have employees, to have employers that can critically think, can manage people, and accelerate in their professions even faster. So we started this MOU, and Mr. Howell here, who will talk to you in just a minute, was our very first student. And when Austin came to me as probably the second semester freshman, early sophomore year, I said, okay, you're going to be our, you're going to be our test pilot through this program. And he really is our first student through this program. He's now a junior at the University of St. Mary. He is majoring in interdisciplinary studies, which allows students to take two disciplines and connect them with whatever they want to do. And so his disciplines are art and business, and he feels that that will give him a really strong foundation. In addition, he's getting his construction technology trade here at KCKCC. So the reason why the University of St. Mary went into this partnership is because we have some students who really love the trade and want to go into that, but they also want the college experience. They want the residential life, they want intercollegiate athletics, they want all, they want it all. And so we found a way to package it so that they still could participate in their sport, and they still can live on campus and have that college life at the same time as the trade. So right now, we have Austin in construction technology, and we have two other students in the electrical area. And we would like to continue to expand that to more offerings as we work through the program. But right now, the students don't have to pay KCKCC. KCKCC does not have to do the financial aid. That is all done at their home institution, which is the University of St. Mary. So the University of St. Mary actually pays the tuition for the students. And we package that all, so it's very little lift for the students to handle that. So, you know, we signed the MOU a year ago. We now have three students. We do have a lot of interest in the program, but as freshmen, they're a little bit uncertain about what careers they want to go into. So thanks to Austin's feedback and some of the feedback that we've heard from our parents and students, we have decided to even expand that program and allow sophomores to enter this trade program, which we think will help as well. So that's been some of our main observations. We're very appreciative of the opportunity to partner and expand the availability of these offerings to our students. So Austin's been here over a year now, so I thought I would let him share what he thinks of the program and, you know, kind of what your goals are.
I'm very thankful for this program because I was gonna leave St. Mary's and just come straight here, and I want to continue running. And so they came to me with this program, and I was so thankful for it. And the, shoot, the stuff at St. Mary's will definitely help correlate with later on, because I'm gonna start in construction, and later on, the business in art, I can help, I can do that to manage a program for construction eventually, which is really, really great, because when my body wears down or whatever, I'm sorry, I just, yeah. Yeah, I'm thinking ahead. It helps me plan out my future, which is very helpful. It's, I don't know what to say.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, is there any questions?
Austin, are you planning on having your own business?
Eventually, yes, yes.
And that would be?
Just general construction for that.
Building homes?
Yes, and renovating buildings and all that stuff.
And what area of, you're thinking of Kansas, right?
Yes, I live here.
What area of Kansas would you be constructing homes?
Either here or Kansas City, or if it's like, I need to drive out like a couple hours away and do work there, I can do that as well.
Yeah, and homes are needed.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Austin. We really appreciate hearing your story and the partnerships between all of our different either high schools or the higher education level really show the power of the programs that we have here and how much there is a need out there for it.
Yeah, we're really working with the area high schools, because all three of our students are local students. We have one from Baser, we have one near Lansing. I think the other one's Garden City maybe, but yeah. So we have some local students who know about the Pioneer Center as well. Also, Austin is part of our national champion cross-country team, and he's also in track and field. So he has a lot to balance with his bachelor's degree work is here and his team, cross-country team, which they'll be going to nationals soon here again, so.
Oh, Austin, you do cross-country. Guess I do track and field also, so we team, yeah, let's team up.
Well, we appreciate St. Mary's too, reaching out. These are the kinds of partnerships and collaborations that, you know, we need to find ways to help students achieve what it is they want to do. I'm speaking to everybody now, you know. Instead of saying, well, we don't do that, or we haven't ever done that, or, you know, we can't do that, let's say, well, we don't do it, but let's see if we can do it. And I think we'll surprise ourselves sometimes in how much more we really can do. And if we get it started with one student, and it grows to three, and then it exponentially multiplies out, then that we will be doing what our mission says that we're doing. We're improving one student at a time, but there's nothing that says we can't then start to exponentially multiply that. So thank you to St. Mary's for saying, well, we can reach out to KCK and see what we can do, and.
That was the truth. That is what happened. We had a lot of naysayers in the program on both sides, like, you know, oh, well, the registrar can't do this, or financially can't do this. And we said, well, let's put our heads together and figure out a way. And with Austin being amendable to helping us figure out those processes, we have now streamlined that process. We had an after-action. St. Mary's big about after-action. So after you do something, you sit back down together and say, what went well, what didn't go so well? And so we had a few wrinkles that we, you know, are ironing out and things like that, but I think we did prove proof of concept. And so now we can really, you know, capitalize on that and move forward. So that does happen, and I think I think schools like us can really show that if you are committed, you can make those things work and go around some of the barriers that present themselves.
This is the Pioneer Career Center, and so, you know, thanks for being a pioneer. And it's more than just a name. It, you know, it's a spirit, and it's a way of thinking and moving. And that's what we need to do in these times that we are living in to help students, so thank you.
Dr. Metzinger, thank you for what you have done.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Yeah, trustee Ash, I was just gonna echo your comments and thank St. Mary's for the work that they did on this. And they came to us with this idea. It's very unique that they're co-enrolled at the same time in getting their technical skills that will provide them career opportunities in life, and then the bachelor skills that will help them with advancement. So it's working out wonderful, so thanks to St. Mary's. And Austin, really, congratulations to you on all that you're achieving. It's really impressive to hear all that you're doing just besides the construction technology and your bachelor's work also doing the athletics and everything. So congratulations to you and keep it up. Good job.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Just goes to show, great things just take a few people putting their heads together and finding a way to get to yes. All right. Before our next item on the agenda, just a procedural step that I missed as we came back into the room. I would like to make a motion just to note for the minutes that we did return to open session at 9:25 a.m. We have a second for that.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda is the audience to patrons and petitioners. At this time, I'd invite the public to raise their hands in the chat or approach the podium for the opportunity to address the board. Addresses must state their name and address for the record before making their comment or question, and there is a three-minute time limit. Do we have anyone in the chat?
There is no one in the chat.
Seeing none approaching the podium, we'll move to the next item then. Next is the interlocal agreement presentations for the Neighborhood Revitalization Act, or NRA for short plans.
Do I have to share the screen?
I see it.
We got it. All right.
Good morning.
Good morning. I am Judd Knapp. I represent Economic Development Department for the Unified Government, and I'm here to talk about the Neighborhood Revitalization Act today. Why am I here today? I'm here to get an interlocal agreement signed between the college and the UG to basically reward people for investing in their properties by giving your tax revenue to them. We have to renew this every five years. It expires in December. So what is the NRA program? It is a tax rebate. It encourages renovation and new construction. Property owners are rewarded by giving them a tax rebate for their investment in our community. And this program has been in place since 1999. Got some benefits of the program. We have long-term revenue growth. Basically, without the NRA, many vacant lots stay vacant. Now there's homes on those vacant lots, turning that vacant lot that wasn't producing tax revenue into something that is producing tax revenue and then has a family inside of it. It stabilizes the tax base by reducing blight and vacancy and creating stronger neighborhoods that could attract more families. And this last point, no loss in existing revenue. So whatever the base revenue at the start of construction is the same amount of taxes that the college wouldn't receive. I'll go into more detail with this. This is how the program works. So when someone applies for the NRA program, the appraiser goes out and appraises the property before construction starts and sets the base value. The base value is the value of the property before any improvements. This is what the property owner will pay taxes on for the term, either five or ten, ten-year tax rebate. The increment part is the increase in value due to their improvements. I have a real-world example next about this, but this is the, this is the part that the tax rebate is rebated back to the property owner. And then future appreciation, so after year one, when the renovations are completed and the house increases in value, that increase is not rebated. So the only thing that's rebated is that increment value. Here's a real-world example of that. This is for a rehab of a land bank property that we had. The current rebate is 95% tax rebate. We're not proposing any change to this. This home started at $89,000. That was the base value, so that's what the appraiser came out and set the base. And then after the rehab, it went to $170,000. So the increment value that the tax rebate comes off is $80,000. 95% of $80,000 is $1,500 was rebated back to that property owner, rewarding them for investing in their home. And they paid taxes that year of $1,600. So here's the, every five years, we get to go in and change the rules of the program. We are seeing an increase in home building. So let's start with Area 1. Area 1 used to go all the way south to KU Med. We made that smaller to north of the river. The rehab part is still at 95% rebate. And then new construction, we reduced this from 95% to 50% for 10 years for just Area 1. Area 2 still has the rehab rebate of 95%. And new construction, we also reduce that to 50% from 95. And then Area 2 and 3 are five-year rebates.
One minute.
And that concludes my presentation. I have a longer presentation behind this if I have any questions. That's the gist of the program.
Could you recap for me just what the changes are that are being proposed, or is it just a renewal of something that's already in process?
It's a renewal of what's in place, but we did make changes to the program slightly. One change is Area 1, that's up on the map, is we reduced the size of it from, I mean, it went south to County Line Road. Because KU Med really doesn't need help, doesn't need that 10-year rebate there, so we made that smaller. Rehab at 95%, we've seen that real-world example. It's about split on what rehabs do. And then new construction was really, basically, if you built a new home in Area 1, you were paying $400 in taxes for 10 years. We thought that was like a little too much. And so if we reduce that to 50, it's about split now. It's about $2,000. They get rebated back and they pay $2,000, so.
Thank you.
Judd, can you help identify how many projects there were this last year or so, so we can have an estimated dollar amount? It is actually a savings for us. I want the board to understand that we would not be rebating as much money from our tax mill revenue. But do you have a really rough estimate on what that savings might be, Judd?
I do not have an example of what 95% versus 50% would be, but in the last five years, Area 1 had 69 applications. Area 2 had 67. I do have a real-world example of a new house that was built. So this is kind of like, at 95% tax rebate, they paid taxes for $290 versus the rebate back to them was $4,200. We're reducing it to 50% and they're very in there. So they'll pay $2,300 in taxes and get rebated $2,100 back to them, so.
That's helpful. Thank you.
This is trustee Ricketts, and I am so sorry if I missed this. Can you share with us the purpose of you sharing this presentation to the board? I'm missing what's the gist of sharing this information with the board?
All right, so I need an interlocal agreement for this program to work between the community college and the UG, because basically we are giving, we're rewarding people that invest in their properties, the taxes that should be coming to the community college. So to do that, I have to get approval to give away your taxes, basically.
Trustee Ricketts, this is something that we do, it's, we did it five years ago, and then this judgment was back to about 1999. So that when, after the board has time to review this, we won't vote on it today, but we'll vote on it in a month. They're sharing their presentation for the board's consideration to sign this agreement, which will help provide some tax relief for people who are either improving their homes in these areas or building a new home in these specific areas. So it does, it does have a tax impact on us, but in the long run, you know, after the five years or so, when the rebate has gone away, the value of those homes are greater. So then we would receive more taxes when the rebate ends.
Okay, all right. And so now I understand, we don't know about this, because most of us have not been on here five years ago, maybe one or two or three. So a little bit more context behind this is gonna be needed so that we can vote intelligently on making this decision. Not today, but we know we'll need it.
Yeah, it'll be on the agenda our next meeting. So we've got some time for questions. If the board would like to send those in, we'll get those over to SOAR. But I did have one before you go, and I just want to clarify kind of for the board's benefit too. So this is something that the UG Commission has already approved, and basically you just need us to agree to go along with this, to contribute to the same plan, or it doesn't work if all the different taxing entities don't get on board, right?
That is correct, yes.
And I already emphasized, there's a savings to the college with this, with reducing the new home tax rebate from 95% to 50%. Judd, do you know how many of those 67 applications were new homes? Or was that the new home number?
I can, I can get you those numbers, but I don't have them right now. It was the total application. It was a number of commercial and new, new residentials in there.
Okay. If you don't mind emailing that to Cheryl and I, then we can share that with the board, because then we can estimate the savings from that. So we do appreciate, I appreciate that, knowing the program, and we'll have more conversation with our board.
Yeah, I know I've seen some of the developments around. I remember one housing development right off of Parallel, maybe around 90th Street, that I remember seeing the signs that say the 95% tax rebate. So I think I'm familiar with this, and it has been going for a long time. So just to clarify, because at the next vote, we'll need to know the consequence if we don't approve this or what the outcome would be. So if we approve it, it would be a savings versus the current arrangement that we have, because the 95 is going to 50. If we don't approve it, then the current plan expires at the end of the calendar year, correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, all right. Any other questions from the board? All right, Mr. Knapp, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, next I'd invite the presentation of the proposed interlocal agreement for the city of Bonner Springs Neighborhood Revitalization Plan Number 7, presented by Ms. Megan Gilland, Economic Development Manager. Good morning.
Good morning. How do I share this? There we go, okay. Good morning, trustees. My name is Megan Gilland. I am the Economic Development Manager for the city of Bonner Springs. I'm glad that Judd and I are actually on the same meeting, because we're here to talk to you generally about the same project or program. Ours is a little differently, so I will run through this very quickly for you. But we have had an NRP program since 1997, and our plan does expire on December 31st of this year. So we are required to go to all of the taxing entities that are part of the program and request permission for them to participate. We've already gotten permission from our local school board and our city council, and then I go to the UG on November 6th. I did think that my MOU was gonna actually be voted on today, so I'm a little bit concerned about the timing on that. We've been working on preparing this renewal for a while, and this new program would go and this new program will go into effect January first. We use this program for revitalization of our inner core, including the Lake of the Forest area and the area northwest of the city. The programs are provided for property tax rebate, again, for that increased value of somebody making investments into their home or into an infill lot. As a general rule, the N R P does not include things like maintenance, painting, property maintenance and things like that. These are these are projects that actually increase the value of their property, maybe adding a room or doing significant repairs or an increase. N R Ps are not unusual at all. There's lots of cities that use these N R Ps in the Kansas City area as well. You have to to be eligible, you do have to pay your tax your taxes in full, and then you get rebated. And in Bonner Springs, single-family structures must be owner occupied and cannot be rent used as rental units. The program does refund a portion of the property taxes that would otherwise be paid for a period of time. This is a list of the N R P properties in the last five years in Bonner Springs. We had sixteen residential properties, and then we had three commercial properties in our downtown participate in the N R P. Here's an example of one of the N R P projects. This is three oh four Oak. They started off with an vacant building. It actually did not have a front door, so it wasn't usable as a storefront. And they've rehabbed it, plus added a new door in, and it is now a wonderful addition to our downtown. Here's a couple examples of some projects that have been done in Bonner Springs. Three of the homes on the lower, the lowest level of this picture are all new builds in infill areas of Bonner Springs. And the Lake of the Forest project is a massive construction rehab as well. We've had six hundred and twenty-seven properties use this program since nineteen ninety-seven in Bonner Springs. And I'm going to fast forward to the next page just because I don't have a lot of time. But this is a screenshot of what we consider the estimated value of all the projects that were in the last plan number six, the last five years. So we estimated the appraised value of the improvements to be about three point seven million dollars, which is an assessed valuation of five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And so the property tax for all jurisdictions is seventy-seven thousand dollars. That's after the N R Ps are complete. So during the program, that lower level of the table, during the N R P, we are only collecting fifteen thousand dollars from all taxing jurisdictions because we are rebating back the other numbers to the right. So Wyandotte County is rebating back thirty-four hundred or three thousand four hundred dollars. The city of Bonner Springs is rebating about four thousand dollars. The U S D is rebating about fifty-four hundred dollars. And your rebate back during the program is two thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars. So that's what the bottom line value was to you or, you know, the the effect of the program to K C K C C in the last five years. But once
One minute.
Once the programs have, once the the buildings have completed, you're receiving the full tax at twelve thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars. This is just a visual of plan number six. And then plan number seven, not a lot of changes. We've expanded to the west for the city limits. And then we've added a couple of commercial properties on K thirty-two. And I'm going to go ahead and go to this slide, but this is just basically any changes that we've made. And the crux of the conversation is is that we have de-incentivized apartments in Bonner Springs, and we are incentivizing or increasing the incentive for single-family senior housing in Bonner Springs because that is an area that we have noticed that we really need to increase the availability of that housing for seniors. We're doing well with apartments. We're adding three hundred units this year, but not all of those are part of participate in the N R P program. So we do have to meet with all the taxing entities and ask for your support to participate. And we have to get this off to the state in December so that we can have it finalized and ready to go for January one.
All right, any questions from the board? Okay, tell me a little bit about the the timing concern that you had. We had originally had this on the agenda as an informational item this month, and then next month we would vote on it. But how is that going to affect negatively your timing?
Well, I was intending to get all of the M O Us to our city council on November tenth, which is our next city council meeting. And then that gives us about a month to turn it around and get it to the state and put the whole program together. I guess if it can't be on for today's agenda, I just really hope that I can get the M O U at the next meeting because I I do have to, you know, get this done. And we've got the U G voting on it next week. And like I said, our school district has already approved it as well.
Okay. Well, I would open this to the board then for discussion if we would like to vote on this this meeting. It looks like in the grand scheme of things, we're talking about a couple thousand dollars of actual rebates for our piece of this. So I don't think it's going to have a huge budget impact for us. I would be in favor of taking care of it today. Is there any concerns with that from the board?
Oppose.
Chair, can I ask one question, please?
Dr. Marjorie, go ahead.
Thank you. Ms. Gilliland, can you go back to the slide that shows the changes between plan six and seven? Okay, thank you. And again, as Chair Esnar just said, the total dollar amount for the college was only twenty-four hundred dollars over a five-year period. So right, there we go. So it's not a significant dollar amount. But but if we go to that other slide, do you know the approximate difference that it is between the the second item, which is going from seventy-five percent down to fifty percent, and the senior housing and the new multifamily housing? I'm sorry, yeah, new single-family housing that's going from fifty percent to seventy-five percent? Do you have any estimates on what that means in dollars?
I don't have any estimates because it would obviously depend on what's brought to us to be part of the N R P program. First of all, you can only be eligible for the N R P if we can actually do the project in Bonner Springs. And right now, we're working hard on infrastructure, so we don't have a lot of area to add senior family subdivisions, for example. And those areas that we do have them are not part of the N R P. So it would be a very small development that could use the N R P on the western side of K C of K seven. So I don't think you're going to see hardly any difference between plan six and plan seven. Again, apartments were de-incentivized just a little bit, and single-family fifty-five plus was increased a little bit. So you're trading off between the two, the two segments of the program.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, but just wanted to get your thoughts on it. Thank you.
I don't have a problem approving it today if if that's what the board wants to do.
I I heard one oppose, so at this point, I would just leave it up to the board. If there's a motion to be made, please feel free to do so, and we can vote it up or down today.
There are also two members of the board not present.
Okay, I do not hear a motion, so we will continue with the current plan, which is to have this come back to us at our next meeting, and we will vote on it then. Thank you. All right, next, under recognitions and presentations, I'd invite the presentation of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Annual Assessment Report, presented by Mr. Jerry Pope, Vice President of Academic Affairs.
Good morning, Chair and trustees.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for this opportunity to share about this year's assessment results. The work continues to focus on three guiding aims: using evidence to improve learning, aligning outcomes with institutional goals, and communicating clearly about progress and needs. The themes that define this year are kind of three: modernization, participation, and learning results. Modernization, this was the first full year using the REDCAP submission system, which includes built-in dean reviews that issue clear statuses. So accepted, accepted with concerns, or rejected, which we think ensures timely and actionable feedback. The system replaces fragmented processes and allows every submission to be visible, reviewable, and improvable. Co-curricular assessment also completed its first full REDCAP cycle, establishing consistent expectations and quarterly coordination going forward. And we used to have a product that we paid for. Our Director of Assessment, Ms. Angie Miller, was tasked with looking for some options that could give us the same functionality and are free, open source, so they're they're free. So congratulations for doing that. And as interim dean last year, I used that system, and I found it very user-friendly and very easy to do. Maybe a lot of emails, but no, it was it was very easy, very good thing. So thank her for doing that. Participation in this current cycle, twenty-four to twenty-six, ninety-eight percent of active program areas submitted assessment plans, and ninety-five percent submitted findings. This is a strong showing, especially for this change in this process. By outcome, eighty percent of the plans and eighty-two percent of the findings were approved. Fourteen percent were approved with concerns, and rejections were rare. Engagement remains broad, and quality continues to rise. At the program level, in the prior sex cycle, ninety-one percent of active areas filed action plans. Just over half were rated complete, and about a quarter required improvement. Status updates reached an eighty percent submission rate, reflecting steady follow-through across all of the disciplines. Learning results, institution-level alignment is strong. Seventy-five academic areas mapped three hundred and twelve outcomes to institutional learning outcomes, with the largest share tied to innovative and critical thinking, which I think is an appropriate emphasis for college-level learning. Communications, civic and social responsibility, and interpersonal intra-personal development are well represented, though there does remain room to deepen integration in the latter two. Co-curricular learning is aligned with the National Council of Accreditation Standards Framework, the CAS framework, emphasizing practical and interpersonal competence and identifying an opportunity to strengthen humanitarianism and civic engagement. Within general education, information literacy and critical thinking were the focus this year. In information literacy, average performance was nine point eighty-two out of twenty against a ten point five benchmark. The ethics legal use measure slightly exceeded expectations, while accessing needed information lagged by zero point forty-five points. These are areas targeted for raider guidance and assignment design improvements going forward. Critical thinking, the design process measure met the benchmark. Topic selection, analysis, and limitations fell short, leading to clarification of course G L O alignment, and G L O is general education learning outcome, before rubric changes are are considered. So we're going to try to refine the process. We look at the results, and we refine the process, and we refine what we do in the classroom based on those results. Two operational levels also advanced course-level assessment. So eleven high enrollment courses were piloted. Examples include Blue one oh one, which is our freshman orientation course, more or less, met all of the outcomes. Psych one oh one met nine of nine. Speech one fifty-one, which is public speaking, met four of five. And Math one oh four, which is intermediate algebra, didn't meet any of the two. So that indicates kind of a need for some looking at the methodology that we use, which they will do. The pilot will expand to twenty courses next year with added training and timeline supports. Class-level reflections, I want to shout out to health professions and public safety, ninety-seven percent of their classes over against a college eighty percent, but that's still really good. We had an assessment pioneer, Jeff Smith, recognized for strengthening the program review process. Assessment champions, Dr. Liz Gilhouse and Dr. David Noel. Rising stars include Deshaun Bailey, Will DeHaas, Nicole Wilburn, and Sarah Cole. So both in academics as well as in our support services. Their leadership illustrates how data-informed practice becomes part of campus culture. We talked about some priorities for the year ahead, sharpening the suspicions, the submissions and onboarding, so we have even fewer of those approved with concerns. We will enhance program review support through training, mentoring, and clearer timelines. We'll address those general education learning outcomes with guidance on assignment design. And we will scale these proven methods, such as our course-level pilots and the structured dean review. So in closing, participation remains high, approvals are strong, and learning data are specific enough to guide targeted improvements to next year. These results reflect a mature and improvement-driven assessment ecosystem that continues to strengthen student learning and institutional effectiveness. So thanks to our Director of Assessment, our Dean of Academic Support and Assessment, who are here. If you have any questions, I'm sure they can answer them better than I. But also thank you to the faculty who are really, if we go back five years, right before the pandemic, when we had our visit, our H L C visit that led to our probation, faculty in general couldn't talk about assessment. Two years later, twenty twenty-two, when we were taken off probation, they could talk about it a lot. And here we are in twenty twenty-five, and they are, in general, both our full-time and adjunct faculty are participating in very, very high numbers. So kudos to all that work that went on. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Go report.
All right, I think you're off the hook. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, I would invite the presentation of the twenty twenty-five Annual Student Holds Report, presented by Dr. Strowman. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. Okay, we're good. Today, I'll be providing a brief update on the Strategic Enrollment Management Plan, focusing specifically on student accounts, holds, and our next steps for improving access and retention. Student holds are generally divided into two categories, financial and non-financial. Financial financial holds include tuition balances over a thousand dollars, library fines, unreturned equipment, and other fees. These holds block registration until the balance is reduced. And non-financial holds include academic probation or dismissal, missing transcripts, incomplete demographic information, such as a name or social security number, disciplinary actions, and state-required health documentation. All right, slide three is academic holds. Academic holds are placed on students based on academic performance. Students are placed on academic probation when their GPA falls below a two point oh. If a student has attempted sixteen or more credit hours and their GPA remains below one point six, they are subject to academic dismissal. These holds ensure that students connect with academic advisors and receive support before they continue enrolling, promoting academic recovery and success. And this slide shows the balance between financial and non-financial holds. And it it's important to note that students can still enroll if they have a balance below a thousand dollars. Holds are applied only when the balance exceeds that threshold. And financial holds remain the most common barrier to reenroll to re-enrollment, while non-financial issues such as missing documents or conduct holds also have a notable impact. Tuition holds continue to represent the largest portion of active holds. Many students impacted by these holds are very close to resolving their balances, often under a thousand dollars, and could return with additional outreach and support. And equipment holds, such as for laptops or loan materials, affect a smaller number of students. And we are collaborating with departments to streamline equipment returns and replacement processes to remove these holds more efficiently. And this slide shows the total number of students enrolled with active restrictions, another word for holds, and their total credit hours. Monitoring these numbers helps us understand how holds influence both enrollment and student progress towards completion. And by the end of this next this calendar year, we we plan to review all hold types and remove any that have not been used since twenty twenty-three, twenty-four academic year. And we we definitely want to look into publishing a clear list of active holds on the K C K C C website to increase transparency and launch an engagement campaign targeting former students with balances under a thousand dollars and those on academic probation to encourage their and those on academic probation to encourage their return and continued success. These actions align with the overall enrollment and retention goals and reducing unnecessary barriers, improving clarity, and supporting students in re-enrolling and completing their educational pathways. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, so here's a quick question. Do we have a policy in place on when, when do we start being very intentional on connecting to the students before they hit probation? And then, do we have a set policy on how, like, how many contacts am I gonna make with, you know, Joe Moe student or Sally Sue, you know, to make sure that? And because I wanna make sure that we're still being very community-focused and very student-focused, and I know we are. But can you share a little bit about that?
Yes, ma'am. I'm not a hundred percent sure if it's a, a, a policy that we have in place, but I do know that our enrollment management team specifically have a list of these students, their names, contact information, and we regularly, regularly reach out to them on a consistent basis if they do have any type of hold. And we still work with them on those holds. The majority of them, they can still register for classes, but i- it's more, again, of transparency and helping them provide that information they need for that access in the classroom and beyond until they graduate. But yes, we, we do reach out on a consistent basis every semester.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Trustee Ricketts, we also have the early alert system. So, if it's academic in nature, the faculty are emailing the advisors and this retention team, hopefully to catch them before they go on probation. So, that, that's one that's very helpful. And we continue to strengthen that each year, I believe.
Yes, and, and again, we do have a specific list of every student that has any type of hold, and we do a calling campaign at the beginning of every semester and even after they're enrolled to, to make them aware that, that we're working with them on those, getting those holds taken off. And I think, Dr. Shulte, you want?
Yes. Just to speak to trustee Ricketts a point. In relation to access and opportunity for our students, one of the things we really focus on is taking a look at that threshold of a thousand dollars. I'm speaking from the financial side right now. And also how we, the outreach we do in relation to looking at payment plans for our students. So, if a student's coordinating with us on a payment plan, because it may be, I can't come up with a thousand fifty dollars today, but I wanna make sure I'm registering for spring, we work with them on a payment plan to make sure we have something in place that shows that commitment on their behalf to make sure that they progress through and they can roll into the next semester as well. Sorry, that's perfect. Yeah, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, gentlemen.
Awesome.
Could you clarify a difference in terminology here for me? What's the difference between when someone hits probation versus an academic hold?
Yes, so the, the, the probation is anticipating that student and, and the trajectory of their academic GPA and trying to catch them before, and then you said the other one dismissal?
The, the academic hold.
The academic hold. So, yeah, it, it's, it's, it's gonna be essentially the same. The academic hold is actually when that GPA does, does go down. But again, as, as we all mentioned, we, we try to do our best to reach out to those students before that, that academic hold actually takes place.
Gotcha. So, preface this with the understanding, I know you're new, you're just bringing us the data, so I'm not pointing any fingers here, but I'm alarmed at the thirty percent increase that I saw year over year in the academic holds. Where do we think this is coming from? Are we seeing trends that we need to get ahead of? Because it went from, now I don't have the numbers in front of me, but seven hundred and some last year to nine hundred and some.
Yeah, seven nineteen, ye- yes, sir. From my understanding, looking at the data and, and speaking with the enrollment management team and also the deans, again, it's gonna all come down to that transparency. What the students don't understand about how the GPA affects these holds, I, I think is gonna be the key. And, and, and definitely the academic advisors working with those students to understand the holds and what they need to do to progress, not have those holds. I, I'm hoping that's gonna make the difference next academic year, but we'll definitely be tracking this.
That's where I, and just, I know we don't wanna, what's the old saying, beat a dead horse, but that is probably something that I, I know we want to work on. One of the other boards I sit on, I know there's a huge tutoring program that's being, has a grant that we just recently received, so that we can make sure that our students receive what they really need. And sometimes, you all know that, that I'll say, you don't know what you don't know. So, if I'm struggling, let's just say it was accounting, which I did not, I did not struggle in accounting, but let's say it was. You know, is, is my teacher proactive? And, you know, when do I realize it, especially our freshmen? And I'm not saying our sophomores, or, you know, it's based on age or, or anything. But I'm wondering, are we looking at policy changes that we should address on? You know, when do we really start connecting with the students so that we can see that number? I was, I saw that too, Chair, and I was thinking the same, like, wow, that dramatically went up.
Yes, ma'am. You know, I, I think, I think to Dr. Mosher's point, where that connection is happening between the enrollment management team and our, our academic side, the early alert process, I, I, I think is, is going to be a, a huge help. Not just ensuring that students are performing in the classroom in real time during the semester, but also that early alert engages the academic advisors to reach out in real time as well. So, they kinda have help both, on both sides of, of the divisions. But again, definitely gonna be tracking these numbers moving forward and, and looking into these holds to see what we can remove or what needs to stay active and, and keep working on that, that student access and, and student help.
Well, I was glad to see also the equipment holds went way down. And so, that shows me that we're being proactive, we're getting in front of students or, or contacting them and clearing what would be a pretty easy-to-clear roadblock for them. So, that's nice, but yeah, I will just kinda reiterate that that increase in both the probation and the academic holds was, is a big deal. And I know we're not at our retreat for the year where we would normally make our Board of Trustees' goals or President's goals, but if that trend continues, I would expect to see that on a formal list here in the future for sure.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other board members, questions, or comments? All right, thank you, Mr. Strowman.
Thank you.
Next, I'd invite the presentation of the twenty-twenty-five Annual Security and Safety, Fire Safety Report presented by Deputy Chief of Police Severs. Good morning.
Good morning, trustees. Dr. Mosher. Thank you for the opportunity to share the key findings from our Annual Security and Fire Safety Report. As you know, this report is a federal requirement under the Gene Clery Act. The Act mandates that all higher education institutions provide transparent information regarding campus crime statistics to protect both our current and prospective students and employees. The data in this year's report is very positive. Our campus crime rates remain significantly low, distinguishing our campus as a particularly safe area within the broader community. This success is not incidental. It is the direct outcome of our strategic emphasis on proactive, high-visibility patrols. This operational focus serves as a significant criminal deterrent and is fundamental in maintaining the security and well-being of our campus community. New to this year's report, you will find a hazing section that was recently added. Next year, we will also start tracking hazing statistics that will need to be in our security report as well. One footnote that I will add for you, there are twenty-three alcohol referrals that you'll notice in the report, which is a large increase. A recent training that the chief and I attended clarified that we may have undercounted the referrals in the past. Previously, we only counted referrals that were arrestable, but in, but ended up as referred. So, we made that self-correction and have updated that, so that's where that increase came from. Happy to take any questions at this time.
No, I just wanna say, you know, your, your comment regarding the, the increased patrol, visibility, movement around, whatever, it's, it certainly deters the incidents, but it also greatly improves how our, our employees and, and even probably most of the students feel safe, you know? And that, I think that's very, very important. We want people to believe they're safe, not a false sense of security, but know because of what they see and experience in terms of visibility, possible contact with our officers, that they are safe. So, thank you for that.
Absolutely. I believe too that our new community engagement has really made a difference as well. We have a community engagement officer that's going to a lot more events, going out in the community and working with the community, fostering and strengthening those relationships. I believe that'll, that'll pay forward as well.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for the report, and thank you to all of our law enforcement officers who are making an effort now to be proactive, getting out there, visible. And I think that that is really clear from some of the commendations that we've seen over the last year, that in many cases, our officers are the first to get to some of these scenes for some of the things that have happened in the community that have been big deals. And that just goes to show that we're, we're not just taking it easy. We are, we're getting out there and making sure that people feel safe, to Dawn's point, so thank you.
Thank you so much for your support.
Next, I'd invite the presentation of the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five Annual Equity and Athletics Disclosure Act Report presented by Mr. Greg McFay, Director of Athletics. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. It's good to see everybody. This is a big report, so going through this is in five minutes will be tough. So, I, I just wanna give some bat, some background, you know, on, on this. So, again, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today about the Equity in Athletics Disclosure Act, or EADA, and the associated, you know, it's called the Equity in Athletics Data Analysis Tool. The EADA enacted by Congress in nineteen ninety-four is a federal law requiring all coeducational post-secondary institutions that receive Title IV funding and offer intercollegiate athletics to annually report on their athletic programs. This includes detailed data on participation rates, staffing, revenues, expenses, and scholarship allocations broken down by gender. It is key to remember that in this report, the data that you see in this report is actually expenses and not what we have in budgets. So, I just wanna make sure it's what was actually spent on our sports during that, that year. Why is the EAD important? First off, transparency and accountability. The EAD ensures that institutions a lot like ours are publicly accountable for how we support male and female athletes. The EADA allows stakeholders, students, parents, researchers, and policymakers to assess our commitment to gender equity in athletics and Title IX, you know, and legislations can't talk today. Second, compliance with Title IX. Title IX prohibits sex-based discrimination with federally funded programs, including athletics. EADA serves as a critical mechanism for, for monitoring compliance. It helps us identify disparities in athletic opportunities and resources and take corrective actions where needed. Third, and this I think is extremely important, you know, institutional improvement. The, the data we submit and analyze is not just a, a requirement, it is a strategic asset. It allows us to benchmark our performance against peer institutions, track trends over time, and make informed decisions about resource allocation, program development, and student recruitment. Fourth, public trust and reputation. In an era where transparency is paramount, our commitment to, to, to equity in athletics reflects our broader institutional values. It signals to prospective students and their families that we are serious about providing fair opportunities for all. Finally, the EAD is increasingly used by journalists, researchers, and advocacy groups to spotlight inequities and drive policy change. By ensuring our data is accurate, comprehensive, and reflective of our values, we position ourselves as a leader in equity and inclusion. There's a three-part test when you have this data that you should always go, go through to see if you are compliant with Title IX. The three, three-part test, and I should keep this in mind, you only have to meet one of the three in order to be compliant with Title IX. The first one is proportionality. The number of athletic opportunities for male and female students must be substantially proportionate to their respective enrollments. This is the most straightforward way to demonstrate compliance. The Office of Civil Rights and Courts generally accept a, a difference of less than five percentage points between the gender ratio of athletic participation and the gender ratio of overall enrollment as being within the safe harbor for compliance. The second part of the test is a history and continued practice of program expansion. The institution must show a history and continued practice of expanding athletic programs for the underrepresented sex. This means actively adding teams or increasing opportunities over time. Case in point, in twenty-twelve, we added women's soccer, so there's a history there. The third part of the test is full and effective accommodation of interests and abilities. The institution must demonstrate that it is fully and effectively accommodating the interests and abilities of the underrepresented sex. This can include surveys, interviews, and other assessments to ensure unmet demand is being addressed.
One minute.
So, let's apply some of this data from, from the report. So, obviously, this data was, was brought into us from business office, from financial aid, and all those sorts of things, so we, we have correct data. KCKCC's full-time degree-seeking undergraduate population consists of five hundred and forty-seven male students, or forty-six percent, and six hundred and seventy-eight female students, or fifty-four percent. In athletics, among these, there are eighty-seven male student athletes, or fifty-three percent of, of the athletes, and seventy-seven female students, which is only forty-seven percent, participate in varsity athletics. This breakdown suggests that we are not within the acceptable standard of proportionality as our numbers and percentages fall outside the five percent window that the OCR suggests. Basically, we could, in order to make these, these percentages better, we could add, you know, more opportunities for female stu-, you know, student athletes to increase that percentage. So, hopefully you understand that. In closing, the, the Equity in Athletics Disclosure Act and its tools are not just compliance checkboxes. They are very important, you know, instruments of progress. They help us uphold our, our legal obligations, strengthen our integrity, and most importantly, ensure that every student athlete, regardless of gender, has the opportunity to thrive. Thank you for your support. All the data is in there, there's a lot to, to digest. I certainly will take any questions on that.
Thank you, Mr. McFay. Any questions, comments from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, under Communications, I'd invite the presentation of the Annual Board of Trustees' Food Drive presented by Dr. Mosher.
All right, thank you, Chair Snard. I was thinking about timing on this. I think this is our sixth year of doing our food drive, or, I think you call it, season. We've got, we're kicking it off again this month, and we will have the food that's donated on display at our November meeting as our students are getting ready for Thanksgiving and Christmas. And, you know, we have a significant portion of students with food insecurity, so this is something that is very helpful for them, and it also helps build our food pantry. I believe you have a flyer, excuse me, a flyer on your tables there, and there's one electronically in the board packet. So, we'd like to kick off that food drive and really encourage everyone, trustees, faculty, staff, community members, friends of the college, to really help support this food drive. It makes a tremendous difference for our students. The President's office will be sending out a lot of invitations to participate. I think somewhat new here is the Amazon wishlist, so people can go to that and find things there that we're looking for, for our food pantry. But it's really a, a great event, and we receive thousands of dollars worth of food every single year. And just would like everyone's support as we proceed with the food drive again this year.
All right, thank you, Dr. Mosher. Appreciate that. Look forward to seeing what we can all do together for this, again, this year. Any questions, comments from the board?
Let's make it happen, board.
All right, next we- Next, we move into the Board Committee Reports. And before we start with Finance Committee, I just want to note for the board and for our cabinet members, President, who will be doing their reports this morning, I do have ten thirty on the clock. So, I know that we had some trustees who had other commitments later in the morning. So, I do just want to be respectful of everyone's time. If we can try to keep reports as concise as possible, we will hopefully make up a little bit of time here. Let's begin with the Board Finance Committee with Trustee Criswell absent. Trustee Gilstrap will do the report this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chair Criswell asked if I would give a brief report for her in her absence. The Board Finance met on October fourteenth, Tuesday, three P. M., and it was a virtual meeting. All members were present, Chair Criswell, trustees Ash and Gilstrap. Minutes were approved as well and consent agenda. Ms. Lorraine Mixon Page, Chief Human Resources Officer, gave a report, twenty twenty-six health and benefit insurance, medical and dental. Dr. Schulte gave the September financial summary and financial board reports. Mr. Jerry Pope, Vice President of Academic Affairs, gave an update and report on CTE fees. Dr. Mosher gave downtown location update as well as the state of the Willigill Building. Mr. Chairman, you asked to be brief. I'm going to conclude with that, and we will have Ms. Mixon Page and Jerry Pope will be given more information for asking for approvals in new business. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Trustee Gilstrap. Any questions, comments from the board? Hearing none, do we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
We have a
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, the Board Policy Committee, and Trustee Hoskin Sutton isn't present today, so Trustee Scruggs Andreu looks like is slated to do the report.
Don't have a report available.
Okay. I believe we've got action items later in the agenda, so that will be just fine. We will skip and wait for that in the new business. Thank you. Next would be the Board Community Engagement Committee and Vice Chair Ricketts.
Well, good morning, everyone. Listen, I still owe an update and a little bit of overview from our September meeting where we actually had our external community members join us. And if you remember, that's the meeting that we had each of our community members send a quick text out to some of the connections that they have and ask them for both positive feedback on great things that they're hearing or experiencing with KC KCC, as well as areas of improvement. So, I finally had an opportunity to put all that data together because it was it was pretty good. But data is always great information. When we get feedback, good, bad, or indifferent, it's great data for us to work off of. I'm gonna share just a little bit of that. And then I'll have a document that I will share with our Board Chair and Board President to add to an upcoming pack. But our overall sentiment, the community perception of KC KCC really remains largely positive with consistent appreciation for partnerships, campus safety, summer programming, and workforce initiatives. However, there are some themes around responsiveness, communication, and leadership approachability that continue to surface as opportunities for us to improve. So, something that I do professionally, so I did it for this as well, where we actually created like a nominal heat map, and it will give us a little bit more in depth. So, I'll be sharing the full data in our November, I'm sorry, we don't have a November, in our December Community Engagement Committee where we have our external community members that will be joining us there. We did have a meeting in October as well, and we are planning for our in-person where we are also gonna look at having a couple of our students come and share. One of the things that I think is very important is that we keep the voice of the community, keep the voice of the community in front of us because they they're hearing, they're always gonna hear what maybe we don't if we're just on campus. And I think that that is so important when we're talking about building trust and building connections. I was so excited to hear that we have a community engagement officer. Can't wait to maybe ask them to come speak and share in our upcoming December meeting. I'll end with that.
Thank you, Vice Chair Ricketts. Appreciate it. Sounds like great work. Any questions or comments from the board? All right. Do we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the ACCT and KACC Delegates Report. Trustee Ash.
Okay, well, a number of us just returned from the ACCT Annual Congress Meeting in New Orleans last week. Chair Isnard attended, Vice Chair, Trustee Ricketts, Trustee Hoskin Sutton, and I all attended as from the trustee group. And so, we had a number of other people attend, Dr. Mosher, Dr. Baylog, Ashley Urban, Irvine, Urban, sorry if I'm pronouncing it wrong. And we had a couple of guys, you know, that worked with us in the FAME program at the Tech Center and actually conducted a workshop about our collaboration, our partnerships, and and what we were doing. I was hoping for better attendance, but we had a pretty decent crowd and a thoughtful crowd because there were thoughtful questions, comments made, and a lot of discussion going on with our folks after the session ended. I know I attended the Governance and Bylaws Committee. I will just refer you to the current copy of the advisor, and there's a report there on page three and four about the different people that were elected to the board. There were four positions open, four candidates. They were all elected by acclamation. It's the first time in all the years that I've attended the Congress that that's happened. One year, we had like five different votes we took before we could get people elected to to the board. And so, that was pretty breathtaking in and of itself because it it can turn into a marathon. And then on page five, you will see also the ratification of the proposed changes in the bylaws there that were adopted. They really both centered on still cleaning up language and things from the change of the former Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee to what is now referred to as the Impact and Success Committee. So, I'll let you look at those yourself. And then for those trustees that did not attend, I brought back some handouts, charting new terrain, state of the association for twenty-four and twenty-five. It's a very encouraging report. The the financial stability of the association is great and new initiatives that they're moving and bringing forward. Additional resources for trustees for training and development is excellent and certainly is affordable due to the strong financial position of the association. And so, I'll I'm gonna leave that there. I will just tell you the next KACC quarterly meeting is in Garden City, December five and six. So, I'll be making making plans for the Central Kansas Tour as I make my way down down across the state there. So, and they're just continuing to work in preparation for developing a legislative agenda for when the legislature seats, the new legislature seats in in January. So, that's all I have to add unless Dr. Mosher would like to update on anything he knows relative Board Regents or legislative action.
Thank you, Trustee Ash. I'll I only have a few comments about our presentations at the ACCT conference, and I'll hold those for my report.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Trustee Ash. Any questions, comments from the board? Hearing none, do we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do, excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is the Consent Agenda. This time, I'd invite any questions or comments. Otherwise, I would call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
We have a motion.
Second.
Do we have a second? Heard Vice Chair Ricketts' second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the Student Senate Report with Ms. Sage Keefover, Student Senate President. Good morning.
Good morning. I only have a few things to say. We had the Fall Festival on Friday, October twenty-fourth, from six to eight. Seventy-five students were in attendance. This past weekend, three other members of the Student Senate and I attended a national conference on student governance. The Student Senate officially launched our virtual suggestion box, and we are currently finding ways to advertise for it. The Student Senate will be creating an outreach plan to allow for a better communication between the Senate and students and clubs. And the Student Senate is currently scheduling meetings for planning the Spring and Blue Devil Games next semester. That is all.
Well, thank you. Sounds like the student body's been active, and I'm glad to hear that you were able to attend the conference. Where did you travel to for that?
It was in Kansas City, so we didn't.
Okay.
It was only twenty minutes away from the college.
All right, well, that's all right. The professional development is always really important, so glad to hear that you were able to attend that. Any other questions, comments from the board? Hearing none, do we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the President's Report with Dr. Mosher.
Thank you, Chair Isnard, and I apologize for my voice. So, it's really exciting to announce that we could just really continue to receive local, state, and national recognitions. On ten-nine, I'm happy to say that I received the Regional Pace Setter Presidential Award, presented at the National Council for Marketing and Public Relations for our district, District Five. And that's really for helping kind of drive marketing efforts and with how we get the word out for the college. So, thanks to Chris Green and all the work that her team is doing with that. So, I'll move forward as one of seven people in the country for the national award that takes place in the spring. As Trustee Ash mentioned, we presented at the ACCT Leadership Congress last week. We had one presentation that I sat on with two other presidents from across the country and Franklin Covey for the success that we've had with the forty-X program, the Four Disciplines of Execution. That was very highly attended. It was earlier in the conference, so there were more people that were still there. But that was a great session. Then also presented at the conference with Bridging the Skills Gap, Collaborative Approaches to Apprenticeship-Based Workforce Development through OEM and Consortium Partners partnerships. There, I worked with Dr. Baylog and Ashley Urban to work in that in that presentation. But we also had one of our Panasonic instructors with us and a person from industry who's now at Alpha Robotics, but he helped us build the FAME program. So, a lot of good interest in what we were talking about there. So, that's exciting. And then last, kind of on the recognition level, I'm excited to announce that I was unknowingly selected by the Heartland Black Chamber for the twenty twenty-five Humanitarian Legacy Award. So, that's quite an honor. There'll be a dinner on in December, so please look out for some invites for that. But really appreciate that. We, last month, we held interviews for the Executive Director of Institutional Effectiveness, and that process is still ongoing. We hosted the four of the seven Board of Trustee candidates in an open forum for the college, participated in the Brydenthal Court dedication, and really appreciate the support we have by the Brydenthal appreciation. Met with the potential Foundation Board members at a Foundation Breakfast. I met with the President of Missouri Valley College for possible partnership together with them, and they really wanted to talk to us about how we do our workforce development because that's really, the word's getting out, and people want to know more about what we're doing. I was really fortunate to be one of three speakers at the Marvin Windows Ribbon Cutting on the October second and really talk about how we're partnering with them for education and workforce development. And then attended the Congressional Forum where we had the two mayoral candidates that are up for election this year. And as we partner in our community and with our community engagement efforts, we sponsored the KC Blind All-Star Foundation 5K, Camp Leavenworth, Cyclone Night at Bishop Ward High School, Partners for Excellence Annual Breakfast, KCK School Foundation, the Freedom Fund Banquet with the KCK NAACP, Falling for the Piper Twentieth Annual Auction, the Tenth Annual Fairfax Festival. We also had the Kansas Court of Appeals take place and hold cases on campus this last month. And then we also had people attending the NICE Conference, National Institute for Construction Excellence. So, just lots of really great things going on at the college that I want to share. And we're continuing with conversations with the Willigill Center, and downtown construction progress is just going very, very smoothly. And with that, I will end my report and take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Mosher. Sounds like a lot going on, and I do want to thank you, Dr. Baylog, Ashley Urban, and our partners who were able to join us in New Orleans for that presentation. It's great that we were able to to share with some others some of the success that we've been having, and the questions that we got were great. So, I appreciate you being there and helping to to spread the words. Any other comments, questions from the board?
Move approval.
I'm loving our community engagement and our activities that we're supporting around Kansas City. Great job.
Thank you.
Move approval of the report?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the Executive Vice President's Report. And with Dr. Baylog out of the office, Ms. Sarabeth Webb will be presenting for us this morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Sarabeth Webb. I am the Director of Entrepreneurship Education here at the college. I'm also an adjunct instructor in the Communications Department. Thank you, Chair Isnard, and members of the board for the opportunity to share this month's update from the Executive Vice President's Office. Dr. Baylog extends his regrets for not being able to present this month. He is currently attending the first session of the Aspen Institute's Rising of the Aspen Institute's Rising Presidents Fellowship in Leesburg, Virginia. This past month featured Productive Trips for the National Association for Community College Entrepreneurship Annual Conference, the ACCT Leadership Conference, and the Rising Presidents Fellowship. At the NACI Annual Conference, in addition to securing $30,000 from NACI for the Pitch for the Skilled Trades, it's also important to note that our pitch that we delivered, we actually asked for $25,000 and they awarded us $5,000 above our ask because the judges were just so impressed. So a funny part of the story was trying to get this huge check through the airport and on the airplane back from San Diego, but I think it's in pretty good shape for the trip that it went through. We were also aligned with the Everyday Entrepreneurship Initiative through NACI. KCKK is the first college in Kansas to be part of this national network of institutions. Also the first college in Kansas, Kansas to receive a Pitch for the Trades grant. We were also invited to serve on the Initiative's Advisory Committee. We also connected with the Skill Point Foundation and began conversations about partnering to award scholarships to students enrolled in our advanced manufacturing programs. As was shared by Dr. Moser, our team at the ACCT Leadership Conference presented a session on the college's collaboration with industry. We're grateful for the support of our partners who took time to travel to New Orleans to present with us. Chris Schorer from Panasonic Energy of North America, an instructor provided by Panasonic for our AET program, and Eric Young from Alpha Robotics. Their partnership has helped us grow our advanced manufacturing programs in meaningful ways. Finally, I want to provide a brief update on our work with the Kaufman Foundation and our Entrepreneurship Education Coalition. Since late April, I've led the team's work funded through a grant from the Kaufman Foundation. The Coalition includes UMKC, Babson College, KCK Public Schools, Piper Schools, Porterhouse KC, and the Toolbox, with KCKK serving as the backbone organization. Over the past six months, we have worked to identify gaps in the current entrepreneurial ecosystem in Kansas City and found systemic weaknesses, including fragmented efforts, lack of funding, and barriers within school systems to integrate entrepreneurship fully. As we create our strategic plan, the four pillars we are focusing on, including our partnerships and collaboration, teacher development, curriculum and programs, and policy and systems change. One of our strategic priorities includes embedding entrepreneurial mindset across curriculums in K through 12 and post-secondary institutions. For KCKK, this entails teaching mindset to everyone, including our learners over at Tech and HVAC and automotive programs. Another priority is to have KCKK serve as a connector and hub for entrepreneurs. This will include partnership with public schools, universities, businesses, and entrepreneurs supporting organizations to bridge entrepreneurial pathways. By partnering with local entrepreneurship supporting organizations, we can bring supportive systems to Wyandotte County. These can include access to workshops, mentoring, and space to collaborate and create. Networking, expo events, and pitch competitions will also serve our entrepreneurial leaders, learners, and leaders. These efforts build off of work we are already doing to build strong relationships with area schools and organizations in the community. This matters because we can offer systemic change to our community. We can change the mindset around entrepreneurship, enhance community infrastructure, and improve our ecosystems equity. In addition to leading the Coalition efforts, my role has evolved to include serving as co-chair for KC Biz Fest, which is coming up in February, serving as a leader for KC Sourcelinks Forging the Future Initiative, a member of eCommunities of Wyandotte County, and helping to plan the Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge this spring, where we have added a college-level division. We will submit our implementation grant proposal to the Kaufman Foundation in early December. We're in a very strong position to secure funding to support the continuation of our work. We appreciate the board's support of this work and look forward to aligning more closely with your Community Engagement Committee and promoting entrepreneurship and small business development in Wyandotte County. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Do we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Vice President of Academic Affairs Report with Mr. Pope. Good morning.
Hello again. I'd like to highlight some major developments within academic affairs during October 2025. Organized this month, I don't think I did this last month, but I'm going to try to do this going forward, around the institutional priorities that are in our strategic plan. Student success, quality programs and services, employee engagement, and community engagement. The Division of Academic Support and Assessment implemented new Four Disciplines of Execution wildly important goals, or WIGs, with progress displayed on scoreboards across departments, which enhances the visibility, accountability, and focus on student-centered outcomes. Honors, five-day to cap a service learning, and undergraduate research programs hosted major educational events in September, including Constitution Day with guest speaker Dr. Alan Rostrum. Rostrum, I'm sorry if I mispronounce that, from the University of Missouri Kansas City School of Law, and a forum on the responsible and ethical use of generative AI attended by more than 150 participants. Library and Learning Services expanded outreach to 231 students on academic probation and hosted Town Hall Cafe. We are listening over lattes, providing faculty an opportunity to share instructional resource needs directly with the library staff. In the Division of Health Professions and Public Safety, each program is completing a course review using the Online Course Quality Review rubric, known as OSCR, to ensure alignment with accessibility standards and compliance with federal regulations for regular and substantive interaction. The Biology Scholars Program, supported by the National Science Foundation, has welcomed its third cohort of STEM students and awarded nearly $200,000 in scholarships since its inception in 2023. Within Adult and Continuing Education, 61 students are enrolled in GED programs at three instructional sites. September tested yielding strong performance, including new completions at the Lansing Correctional Facility, where remote testing is expanded, expanding access to residents. Quality Programs and Services, online education services launched the Instructional Technology Exchange within Microsoft Viva Exchange. The Division also incorporated artificial intelligence tools within Blackboard and Panopto to enhance instructional feedback and media production. Division of Career and Technical Education received a major instructional equipment donation from When Supplied, including condensing units and furnaces for the HVAC R program, providing students with training on industry-standard systems. The Annual Career Fair at the Technical Education Center welcomed more than 90 employers and 500 participants, with employers noting the professionalism and preparedness of KCKK students. Culinary Arts students completed a practicum and canapé presentation, while high-voltage line tech, preparation and presentation. While high-voltage line technician students gained field experience through site visits with the Board of Public Utilities and construction of a pole yard at the Technical Education Center using the new Altech Digger Derrick Equipment. In the Division of Health Professions and Public Safety, Dean Tiffany Bohm and faculty member Dr. Darren Young presented at the National Network of Health Career Programs in two-year colleges on developing leadership within health education programs. Dr. Bohm also elected to the organization's Board of Directors. The Mortuary Science Program submitted a substantive change request to expand online offerings beginning in Fall '26. However, I just learned that they were approved for that initial approval. They're coming in spring and they want us to already be offering those courses, so we're going to start offering some of those in spring. So really good, good, good deal on that. In the Division of Arts Humanities and Social Sciences, music faculty and students achieved national recognition through the Jazz Education Network and public performances across the region at the Prairie Village Jazz Festival, the Plaza Art Fair, the Folly Theater's 125th Anniversary Celebration. Faculty and staff remain deeply engaged in professional growth and institutional development. The Institute for Teaching and Learning conducted faculty development sessions focused on instructional strategies in the area of art, artificial intelligence, launched a WIG to increase faculty reflection on learner-centered practices by 10%. Workforce Innovation held a planning retreat to help establish enrollment measurable goals for enrollment partnerships and revenue diversification. Division of Mathematics, Science, Business, and Technology, faculty and students recognized facility personnel on National Custodians Day, emphasizing appreciation for the collaborative work that sustains our academic environment. Additionally, nursing faculty member Dr. Terry Schwager completed a Doctor of Education in Leadership in Higher Education through Baker University. I also have quite a number of things for community engagement. Next time I'll time my speech a little bit more so that I go within that five minutes. But in all in all, academic affairs as a division continues to align its work with priorities of Kansas City-Kansas Community College Strategic Plan and advances that plan on a day-to-day basis. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the board? Do we have a motion to accept?
Jerry, I'm just, I'm sitting here kind of speech, I'm like, gosh, there's a lot going on. But that is, that is great. Great work with you and your team.
Thank you. We have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Good. Motion carries. Thanks again. Next, we have the Vice President of Enrollment Management and Student Services Report with Dr. Strowman.
Hello again. I'm pleased to share several key highlights from our ongoing Fall 2025 initiatives that reflect a strong progress towards our institutional goals of growth, engagement, and innovation. And let's begin with enrollment. Our Fall 2025 unduplicated headcount is up 4.7% compared to Fall 2024 and up 9.3% from Fall 2023. Our credit hour enrollment has also seen steady gains, up right now for 7.9% from last fall and up 11.5% over the past two years. We're also seeing remarkable success with our eight-week course model, which continues to meet students where they are. Enrollment in eight-week courses is up 21%, totaling 1,883 students, compared to 1,557 last fall. Our credit hours in these courses have also increased by 21% from 7,042 to 8,033. Our dual-credit program continues to grow, reflecting strong partnerships with area school districts. This fall, enrollment increased by 42 students, or 3% compared to last year. And credit hour production is also up by 524 hours, 5.1% increase. And something exciting that's moving forward within our high school partnerships, we've been able to implement a new student-centered enrollment process using Microsoft Forms. And in this digital tool, streamlines data collection, reduces manual entry and errors, improves accessibility for students and families, and allows for faster processing and confirmation. And overall, it enhances our ability to provide timely and accurate service to our district partners and their students. And I don't know how much you know about the dual-credit process, but previously it was really paper submissions. Everything was, was paper-based. So we're trying to move away from that and produce a more sound system for all entities involved. And international enrollment is another bright spot. We now have 109 international students, representing 25% increase from the spring semester. And this is a testament to our growing global reach and, and reputation. And beyond enrollment, our student engagement team continues to build campus community through high-impact programming. This fall, they hosted several successful signature events, including our Grocery Bingo, which had 50 students involved. Donut Worry, Be Happy with 131 participants. The Blue Devil Tailgate with 40 students, Constitution Day with 76 students, and Get the Scoop on Student Engagement, which drew 93 participants. Finally, I'd like to recognize, as Dr. Moser also recognized, the Brydenthal Foundation for their continued generosity and commitment to our mission. Their recent gift secured naming rights to our competition court and will support both scholarships and athletic operations. And in summary, the Fall of 2025 reflects sustained enrollment growth, enhanced student engagement, and continued innovation in how we serve our community and students. And we're seeing measurable results that speak to our hard work and collaboration across every area of the college. And, and thank you for your continued support and, and I stand for questions.
All right. Thank you. Great work. Sounds like a lot going on as well. Any other questions, comments from the board?
It's good stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah, great job, Dr. Strowman. And I'll just emphasize the work that we're tightening up the paperwork with the dual and concurrent enrollment. It used to be, as you mentioned, the paperwork would have to go back and forth from the college to the district, to the student, to the parents, to the district, to the college, like four, five, or six times. So now it's an electronic process with electronic signatures. So it will really speed up and, and just be a better service provided to our, our high school students. So it's something we've been working on for a while, so that's a really significant gain by getting that electronic now. So, so good work.
Thank you.
I definitely would like to know at some time in the future, how are we comparing with some of our other community colleges with their dual enrollment? And, and I know it's not completely up to us, but it's, you know, what else can we do to increase our partnerships? You know, of course, I'm, I'm gonna look at USD 500 probably first, but especially with our Wyandotte County, all of our Wyandotte County high schools, what are we doing? What, what can we do more of than? Because I, I know we're, we're here and I know we can be here, so it's going to be great to see what we could, what's next?
Yes, ma'am.
What's next for us?
Yeah, that, that's a great point. And, and this semester alone, this fall, I, I know our high school partnership, staff members, Julius has been amazing in meeting our, our districts halfway and being able to gain a lot more insight of what it is that the students and the parents need from us, along with the administration, to really move that dual-credit purpose forward. So a lot of this initiative with the Paperless Forum i- is coming from our districts as well. And we have partnered up with some of our local community colleges along with our four years. And, and, and really, this is a new, a new initiative. This is something that, like Dr. Moser said, needed to be done, and, and we're looking forward to the results moving forward.
And trust me, you meant, you asked the question, what's coming next? We're working really, really hard to get an early college started on KCKK's main campus in Fall '26. And we'll start with USD 500 on that. We're, it's all in the process and Dr. Strowman and Mr. Pope and everyone is working really hard on this and we'll have to figure out finance and everything. But that's, that's one of the main things that's, that's coming next. So hopefully, well, in time, we'll have, you know, two, three, 400 high school students.
You know, this is recorded, just so you remember, this is recorded.
Absolutely.
Good job, team. Good job. I'm looking forward to it.
I don't know, Mary, I can't speak specifically to comparison with the other colleges regarding dual enrollment, but I will tell you, just in terms of overall enrollment, we're out front with our sister organizations in, in Kansas. And I believe, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, this makes like six, five or six semesters in a row with positive enrollment gains. So we're doing, we're doing very well within the Kansas Community College system.
Beautiful. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Do we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Motion carries. Thanks again. Next up, we have Dr. Shulte for the Vice President of Finance and Operations Report.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for your time this morning. Just want to give some highlights from the area underneath Vice President of Finance and Operations. One of the key pieces, we talk about a lot here or have over the last year, my time is forty X on campus. With that, my team is very active and engaged in the forty X process, having our WIG sessions every Thursday at 2:00. But one of the key pieces we tried to highlight this year was creating scorecards. I created a competition in my team with which I'm putting up my own money to pay for a pizza party for whoever gets the best scorecard with an objective judge going around on Wednesday to take a look at those scorecards to really emphasize the work that's being done in each area. So if you get a chance when you're on campus next time, let us know. We'll take you around, take a look at them. I haven't seen them yet myself, so I'm excited to roll those out and see what they look like as we move forward. In addition, I'll be rolling out my own for my team, which they know nothing about, but I'm excited for them to see what that is as well. So in the area of finance, our auditors, Novak Berks, are in the final stages of completing our audit. That will be presented to the Finance Committee and the Board in November, the November meeting. So look forward to that and we will be able to bring that to a close. So look forward to that, and we will be able to bring that to a close. In addition, last time we talked, Trustee Husken Sutton mentioned RFP, going out on RFP. That will be a engaged conversation with Finance Committee, going out on RFP for our audit partners going forward. In addition to that, in finance, focus on budget and payroll, and with the Board's approval of the budget, making sure that the adjustments to salaries are being implemented into the next payroll cycle for employees. And we, we wait until you all approve that before we do it, make sure that that's appropriately allocated to them in their next paycheck. Inside of Human Resources, the team successfully launched a new employee communication forum called Ask HR. It's actually what their wig is for the year, in support of their wildly important goal. And it's essentially like a town hall session with which they hold based on the topic. So anybody on campus, and even individuals off-campus, could join that. Teams call, listen to, the last one was on a benefits update, so good work being done there as well. In addition to that, inside of Human Resources, and I might have noted it last month, Training and Development, the annual compliance training. Many of the reports you heard tonight on CLIRI, on the Equity and Athletics, are all tied to a lot of the trainings that we all do as employees on an annual basis, looking at Active Shooter, CLIRI Compliance, EEO, FERPA, and Title IX Compliance as well. So not only is it happening in the various departments on campus, it's happening across campus to make sure individuals are aware of what their roles are in each one of those. Inside of Information Services, we continue with the SAS Migration Project with his, which is an absolute monster, but they're tackling it well under the new leadership of HAO Koyo, and also engaging staff in the process as we continue to work towards bringing that project to completion. One other note, we work with students and working with Student Senate on MFA, Multi-Factor Authentication for Students' Email Accounts on Campus. As a world, we want to make sure that we're secure in what we're doing, but we also want to make sure that we have access, and students have access to multiple tools to be able to authenticate into that. We can't always make an assumption, everyone has a cellphone, laptops, whatever it might be. We want to make sure we have fobs available for those students if needed as we move forward. In Facility Services, we continue onboarding four new team members with a commitment to enhancing campus infrastructure. We do this every day. Every day, there's things on campus that break, change, that we need to fix, and also, we're doing that with the eye, a strategic eye, looking at what it means in relation to our master facilities plan as we move forward. College Police, it was noted earlier by Trustee Ricketts and others, heavy participation in community engagement, the Community Engagement Officer, you may have seen him around, out and about, that's really with intention. The more that we can make police, college police on campus visible, the more engaged students others become. As Trustee Ash noted, I think it creates a sense of security to know the officers versus just having them be there. Finally, in the Wellness and Fitness Center, they partner with Canbee Market, a Kansas City nonprofit focused on combating food insecurity, to provide free fruit to students and members starting in early October. In addition to this, I reached out, Karen Callahan actually reached out on my behalf to Canbee because I'm so, I was passionate about what they do as far as Canbee Market and looking at food insecurity. And I will be sitting on their Finance Committee as well, as part of my outreach and professional development. In addition to sitting on the Finance Committee of Build YCO, which was previously Community Housing Wyandotte County. So my efforts in the building are laid out there, but also my efforts outside of it and being able to be engaged in the community are noted in those two groups. So with that, that is all I have, is my report. Any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yes, I do. Only because you mentioned something. Can you share real quick, because I don't think we realize sometimes as board members and community members what our faculty and staff actually do outside of your college life?
Certainly.
Do you mind sharing some of the boards that you're engaged in?
Yeah, those, those are the two main ones right now, Trustee Ricketts is. I've been on the Community Housing Wyandotte County for about seven months. And Canbee, I met with the President of the Board just last week, Jen Malone, and we sat together, and she said, this is an excellent opportunity, bring you on in Finance Committee, and then move into being a potential board member with Canbee as well. So for me, being new to the Kansas City area, I've only been in this area for, you know, a little under two years. So getting to know and getting to engage in those is an important one. It's been one of the goals that I laid out with President Moser for me, moving forward, is say, how do I actively engage in community? And he's given me the grace, which I think is wonderful, to also look at it through a passion lens, to say, I'm, I'm in favor of and very passionate about providing affordable housing to individuals in the area. And Canbee fell, you know, right in line, looking at food insecurity and food deserts in the area. How do we work towards making sure that we have a community where everybody's taken care of? So for me, those are the two main ones, Trustee Ricketts. And if you guys have any suggestions of others, I'm certainly open to them. Send me an email, let me know. My time is a bit limited, but I am also willing to take part and, and explore, along with my colleagues, I'm sure, how do we engage and make sure our name is out there as a college?
Thank you, thank you for serving.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you. And I was looking through your written report, and I just want to do a quick shout-out too, to our HR and our payroll staff, who are working diligently on open enrollment that's currently going. And I know how much goes into that and communicating with staff through it. So October 20th through November 2nd, so my count, five days left. If there are any staff, faculty, or administration who have yet to get in and do your open enrollment, please don't forget.
Appreciate it.
With that, do we have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, we have the Vice President of Marketing and Institutional Image Report, and Ms. Green is out this morning, but Mr. Randy Royer will be stepping in. Good morning.
Thank you, Chair. The Marketing and Institutional Image Division has created, created two wildly important goals for the 40X implementation this year. Marketing will focus on increasing enrollment messaging, while events will concentrate on enhancing customer service. Quality in program and services, like Dr. Moser mentioned earlier, he was recognized for, as an innovative president and partner in the Marketing and Public Relations with the Pace Center Award. The marketing team. Sorry, can't scroll down. Sorry about that. The marketing team continues to support second-eight-week enrollment with a comprehensive campaign while planning for the spring semester enrollment. And the Community Engagement attended the Bishop, or the Vice President of Marketing of Institutional Image attended the Bishop Ward Foundation Community Dinner at Chandler's Mercy Park. We're launching the redesign of the website to continue to increase views. And Chris also asked me to show a new program video that features the HVAC. So go ahead, play that.
Students should choose Kansas City, Kansas Community College, because we've been in business for over 100 years. We've had very good success with our HVAC program.
What I enjoyed most about this program was meeting all the different people.
Everyone in here is friendly, everybody helps each other out.
This is Technology Center, we have construction over there, electrician over there, being able to meet everybody and then come together. HVAC is a jack-of-all-trays, so we touch refrigeration, electrician, sheet metal.
Students come out of here with a minimum of knowing how to do installations.
The work we do in school is replicated what we do in real life. There's literally no difference.
They help you get to internships. The internship really helped me a lot. It helped me build up my confidence, but I also got my EPA and my OSHA 10.
And then having the support as well, the teacher support here is very amazing. Like if I'm struggling, they're extremely helpful. So when I'm ready to go get a job, I'm able to tackle everything.
Makes you feel good when you see your students actually get jobs. It makes you feel like you're doing the right thing.
And I can answer any questions you may have?
Well, thank you, love those videos, that one looked great.
Great job, Randy, and I'll just, if I may add, a little bit, up on the front table, you see those three award medallions. Those are awards that the Marketing Department also won at the NCMPR tournament, not tournament, a competition, at the same time I received the Pace Center Award. So we thought we'd bring them and display them for everyone to see with all the great work that marketing is doing. So congratulations to them on that. I think you also see the NACI Award that Sarah Beth mentioned as well. So we want to try and, when those things happen within the college community, bring those up and show them to, to you and the public, when we are recognized for these special events and awards. So great job, Randy.
Thank you.
Absolutely, congratulations. We have a motion to accept the report, please?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thanks again. All right, that brings us to the new business portion of our agenda. And we have next some policies to consider. So with Trustee Husken Sutton out at this meeting, she would normally present for the Policy Committee. But we're gonna try to get this, get through this together between myself and Trustee Scruggs Andreyu. She serves on the Policy Committee and also Vice Chair Ricketts, so if there's any questions, we'll try to tackle those together. But you have seen these in your packets, hopefully you've had a chance to review them. They have been through all of the Senate's for their input and approval, and then finally, the Policy Committee for their approval, and then submitted to the Board as a whole. So at this time, are there any questions or comments about the three policies presented? So we've got photography and video recording and use, library privileges, and the safety policy. All right, hearing no questions, do we have a motion to approve the three policies as presented?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, I would invite the approval, excuse me, I would invite the, yes, the approval of the special course fees for Excel and Career and Technical Education for High School, presented by Mr. Jerry Pope.
Thank you. So the fees, I tried to, well, let me just say this. Each year at this time, we bring forward the fees for Excel and CTE classes. So these are fees that are charged to high school students that are taking Excel and CTE courses. There's kind of two categories for these. There are fees that we collect as part of the enrollment of the class, and then there are items that are required in the program that the student is required to purchase. There are some high schools that actually purchase those for the students, there's some high schools that purchase some of it for students, and there are other places that the student just has to purchase those on their own. We make our best research on how much that's gonna cost students, but if it's a, you know, something that the students bring to the class, and they can get it cheaper than what we've identified, then of course, they, they do that. I put in what we had last year's fees. We go through this project every year, we try to clean it up, we try to get more accurate each year. The next steps are, we submit these to the Technical Education Authority, actually, the KBOR staff who review them. Then it goes through the multiple bodies in KBOR, and eventually, they are approved by KBOR, and their, their target date is their February meeting. Last year, it wasn't until their April meeting, which caused all kinds of issues. So they're really trying to work to get them approved finally. And then once we get official approval, we will, in the Finance Department, they will submit those and enter those in the system, so it's charged to the students. So the color coding, you can see, I apologize, well, I don't apologize, but I'm color challenged, we say colorblind. I'm color challenged, so I don't know what color that is, but the ones that are in the colored are the, the fees that are charged directly to the students and are not collected as part of the course fees.
Looking at just a couple that stood out here, and I apologize for not getting this question to you in advance. But it looks like mostly in the cosmetology program, there's some pretty large increases, and it looks like it's because of kits that are being given to the students, and then there's something pivot point software. Can you tell me a little bit about that, just because that's a big jump?
Yes, the, the, and it is driven by those kits. Some of that is driven by the state requirements for those programs. We, I think last year, we may actually have underestimated the cost of that. And so the students, because it's a student fee, it came back to us that they were actually spending more than what we indicated. So we were trying to make as much as possible this to be the highest cost that they would spend on those products. But as I understand it, they'll get a list, and they can purchase them in other places, rather than, you know, where we've tried to identify what these costs are. Does that, does that make sense, does that help?
I think so. I've heard that in past years when we've had some increases. Sometimes it's just, these are items that are already being purchased by students separately for more cost in most cases. So we're hoping to get them a, a deal buying in bulk. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And our commitment is to put out the absolute highest price. I mean, we, we do not overestimate on purpose by any means, because we want students to get a realistic view of what the program's gonna cost. But just by the very nature of it, sometimes the students can find those items at a cheaper price.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, I'd call for a motion to approve the special course fees for Excel and Career and Technical Education for High Schools as presented.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, I would invite the Presentation of the Annual Medical and Dental Benefits by Ms. Lori Ann Mixon Page, Chief Human Resources Officer, good morning.
Good morning, and I realize I'm holding you up from lunch, so I will be quick. We are pleased to once again offer a very competitive package to our employees for their benefits for 2026. Human Resources and Finance again partnered with Bukati Companies, they are our healthcare benefit broker. And they provided some competitively bid healthcare and dental options for us. So for medical coverage, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City provided a competitive renewal quote. So last year, Bukati did negotiate a 12.5% renewal cap rate. But this year, they were able to negotiate that down to a 4.5% increase over the current rates. What this means is that employees who have employee-only coverage and are in the high deductible plan will see an increase of about $1.35 per month. Those who are in Spira Care will see an increase in their employee-only coverage of about $1.42 per month. And those who are in the PPO plan will see an increase of about $1.72 per month for employee-only coverage. Staying with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City will provide minimal disruption to our employees and allow us to continue to provide resources and information about how to lower the cost of healthcare. So for the 2026 plan year, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City is our recommended healthcare provider. For dental coverage, the 2026 Dental Delta Dental proposed a 6% rate increase. And given the nearly 14.5% reduction in rates that we saved by switching from Aetna to Delta Dental in 2024, the college is saving a huge amount by staying with Delta Dental again for this year. So our recommendation is that we stay with Delta Dental for the 2026 year. And then for vision coveries, there was no change to the rates for sure, assurance vision. We do have a cost-share recommendation. We recommend that the percentage of the premiums that are paid by the employee and the employer remain the same for 2026. This cost-share provides a very affordable benefit for employees. And in your packet is a breakdown of what the actual costs are, the actual cost-share amount, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, thank you, sounds like we got the, the intro rate for dental, and it's just catching up a little bit this year, so not, not totally unexpected.
It'll be interesting to see what it looks like next year. It'll be interesting to see what it looks like next year.
Yeah. And then with medical, I've got to say, I'm really impressed. I have heard from brokers this year that government employers, I mean, like institutions in this area are almost all seeing double-digit increases, even self-insured or administrative services only orgs. So four-point-five percent is really good, so they have done good work for us, pressing the insurance companies to keep the rates competitive. So hopefully, that translates to good coverage for employees, and they understand that we are doing our best to keep rates competitive for them. So thank you to your team for their work with this, and any other questions from the board? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the Annual Medical and Dental Benefits as presented?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the end of our agenda for this morning. Thank you for everyone making the trip up to the Pioneer Career Technical Center here in Leavenworth for our meeting this morning, and to those virtually, do we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Well, and thank you to our hosts, hostesses as well. We appreciate, you always make us feel good when we come up here. And I'll move that we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.